Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Mr. Platt, Kofi, and Colerole, please.
Jennifer Harden.
Here.
Jack Miley.
Here.
Linda Grassi.
Here.
Tom Heck.
Here.
Steve Jeffries.
Here.
You can rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all staff, students, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I would like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. First up, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the April 29, 2019 Board Minutes. If I can have a second, please.
One second.
Mr. Jeffries, is there any discussion? Colerole, please.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Steve Jeffries.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye. Motion carried. And that takes us to special reports. Mr. Keles.
Okay, we have Mr. Heasley here from our construction managing company to give us an update as he always does in the month. But I have to say that I was able to go to visit Parkside twice over the weekend, and it's really coming along. And I actually took my wife through it, and she couldn't believe how nice that building is. So it was nice, really, really, coming along really well. So tell us some more good news.
I'm going to talk about them as one because they're pretty much right on track with each other. Finishes, painting, grid, lights are being dropped in the grid, diffusers. Case work will be coming here in several weeks. Start that with flooring right behind that.
Windows. Talk about the windows.
Windows. I'm sorry. Windows came last week, Monday, and got everything shook out. They've been installing for the past week. That's going well. The bliss of glazing is in. That's going down in the first floor. The interior looks good.
How did that fit inside?
Fits. Mr. Keles saw it in there, and it's, you can't tell the difference unless you're looking for it. You have to look to see the difference between it. So it looks really good. It's very heavy.
Yes, it was heavy when I picked it up.
But it looks good. Those are going in storefronts today. Those are going in. Those are your larger windows that aren't technically windows that open, like in the library and innovation lab. Entrances in that, I think, are coming next week. That's all your doorways and that that are aluminum. As I said, the Cory tile floor started in the kitchen at Madison today. It will be here for Concord Friday.
Elevator.
Elevator is here for both buildings and being installed in both buildings. That's coming along. Kitchen equipment will be here the week of the 10th. The gym floors will be here the week after that. The wood, it'll acclimate to the building and be installed the following week. We're moving right along. We're shooting for what I like to do. It's really pushing. And before you ask me what keeps me up, at this point, it's everything. It's easier to say what doesn't keep me up, but I, but we're shooting to get our certificates of occupancy mid-August, which will give you several weeks with the building. Unless we have some hiccups, that's what we're really shooting for. Weather hasn't quite helped us out a little bit with our site work, but we'll get past that, and we'll get that done, too.
One thing we keep on mentioning, too, when I talk to Mrs. Chantry, who's in the middle of Madison, which will be Riverview, is the fact that the loop in the parking lot will not be ready by the beginning of the year as planned. It wasn't supposed to be ready.
Right.
Because we have to take down the existing old Madison building, and it won't be until about October, correct?
Yeah, we probably, we're still going to shoot for that October 1st, but with additional roof area that needed baited, we have had a couple of weeks on that to be cautious, to be safe.
And so anybody listening to this, you want to make sure that the parents, although sometimes it's difficult to encourage their child to ride the bus unless you're a walker and not have as much traffic as we probably typically would in the beginning of the school year.
We're gearing up. We're ready to June 17 to bake Madison. And four or five weeks after that, she'll come down. It won't take long at all. And then backfill and start that site work out there.
Now, someone had asked during these decommissioning or these farewell open houses, I think is what they call them officially, are we making available a pile of bricks?
We don't have bricks. We'll get them on a pallet. We can get them outside the fence line is what we're usually doing. People, I mean, they probably, they're probably three, four hundred bricks are out there.
For the throwing range, right?
So they'll be out there and on a pallet at the end of it. Those are still there. We'll just get rid of them. Yes, we will do that. And we're going to save the Madison Avenue marquee up front. Looking forward, it's going to be a very busy summer, but I see the tunnel light at the end of the tunnel.
Very good.
It was just a tunnel before.
It's got lights and everything.
But yeah, it's very busy, lots, no time to think. It's actually the most stressful time, but the most fun time because the building changes every week now. You see.
Water treatment at Parkside, I know that you had the tanks redone.
Well, the tanks went right in place. We have a little bit of water coming in through the rock fracture down on the bottom. It was handled with a little bit of a pit, a five-gallon bucket with some holes in it and some pump, and it kept it nice and dry. It was smooth as, we couldn't have asked for anything more. All those tanks are in place. We just need to wait for it to dry out back there with the rain to put the mountains in. But that won't take too long at all. Madison, that's all fired up. They were working some kinks out of that. That has its permanent power, too. They're getting ready to do their official startup with the system in Madison. Everything's moving right along. We should have, the mechanical system should start popping up, running one by one here soon. We're getting ready to, next week and a half, fire up Area D. That's, it's not just a matter of flipping a switch. There's a process that goes through with the engineers and everything. So they should start all coming online. All your systems, technology, I think your fiber guy's bringing the lines in a couple, in a couple of weeks here. So we'll get that installed. Racks are going in the technology rooms. Right behind that, they'll be installing equipment. As I said, case work in the next several weeks, flooring right behind that. A lot of you have walked through. You see the grid ceilings are up there. Lights are in place. We won't put, we'll put the perimeter tile in place, but we'll save the rest for last because everybody ends up going back up there and you see handprints and nothing else.
It's fabulous.
And we're doing, I got a piece of good news right now. We're doing well with our CMR contingency.
Good.
Right now on Madison, we still have 158,000 on the Calumford that hasn't been committed to and a 129 Concord. Now, we'll use, we'll use a decent amount of that with some overtime in the next two months, but we've been diligently managing that. So with the goal of trying to get this returned back to the district, now will really help us. Tracking that way.
Good. Thank you. That's good.
We have, you can go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just realized we have, I didn't just realize, any of these guys were coming, the Eagle Scouts. We could have probably put them to work for some projects over in our new buildings. Actually, I asked if you could build some new schools. You want to come on up, guys? Mr. Leeeth is going to introduce you, and the board would like to congratulate you on your Eagle Scout. Yeah, I'm over here.
Okay, thank you for having us. Riverside High School is proud to recognize and congratulate seniors Jordan Snyder, Nicholas Tilck, sophomore Andrew Bernardo, and eighth grader Timothy Bernardo. Jordan, can I make it, by the way? Who were obviously named Eagle Scouts from the Boy Scouts of America. Eagle Scout is the highest rank attainable from the Boy Scouts of America. Since 1911, more than 2 million young men have earned an Eagle Scout rank. Among other requirements, there's an extensive service project that the scout plans, organizes, leads, and manages. The project is intended to benefit the scout's community, any school, or any religious institution. Eagle Scouts who enlist in the U.S. Armed Forces may receive advanced rank and recognition of their achievements, and some colleges and universities offer scholarships to Eagle Scouts. So Nicholas, you're senior. Why don't you tell us a little bit about your service project?
My service project was helping out the Sub-Zero Mission. It's an organization based out of Perry where they go around helping the homeless and specifically targeting homeless veterans. My project, due to their lack of boot donations in last year's collection area, this year I was trying to help them raise at least 40 pairs of boots. I exceeded that goal by 65. And also at my collection event over at St. Gabriel's Church, I brought in 450 items and over $900.
Awesome.
Including items included hats, coats, gloves, sleeping bags, and boots, which the goal of the project.
Great. Thank you. Timothy?
So for my Eagle Scout project, I made two outdoor pergolas for St. Anthony's Church. That's a church we go to, me and my brother. So I mean, basically, everything went smoothly. The church priest brought it up to my attention because I was actually at youth group, and I talked to the youth group leader about it. And he said, oh, I mean, talk to the priest. He said pergolas is a great idea. I didn't know what it was at first, so I searched it up. I mean, it looked cool. It looked that I could, it looked doable. So I mean, we got it done. And I got a lot of help from everyone. And it was actually, it was amazing how much help I got. Coach Wayne, he wrote a letter of recommendation. Thank you for that.
I'll tell you, every time I had you in the woodshed, he knows what I'm talking about. He brought it.
How long did it take you?
Probably, well, for, to get Eagle Scout rank, it took me like three years as a scout. But for the actual project, it took like three months.
Peter?
My project was to raise five flagpoles in the Riverside Cemetery, right down the street there. Each flagpole had a different branch of the military on it. I actually got a lot of help from the community and a lot of businesses and veterans organizations. I ended up raising $3,500 to put them all up, and I got a lot of discounts from businesses such as, oh, Gettysburg Flag Works and Osborne Cement. And my project took from February last year to November last year.
Great. Good job. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, guys. Congratulations. All right, that takes us to old business. If anybody has anything for us?
I just have a question on the old Chromebooks, like what we're, if we have any update on what we're doing with the Chromebooks that we're re, not even repurposing, but replacing.
I don't think we're against selling them. We just have to figure out a way of doing it and collecting the money and, and.
We have a call with NetOps tomorrow. We can kind of run past them again and just kind of get an update on how we want to coordinate. I'll make sure we bring that up.
I have something. The bleachers. What is going on with our stadium bleachers, our
I have that under, I was going to address that under my report.
Okay.
I have some information for the board.
Anything else for old business? Okay, that takes us to new business. If anybody has anything?
Jim, I have a question. Are you going to address the high school during your report, or do you want me just to address that now? Old business. The consensus that we are not ready for Phase Two.
Oh.
Like that.
No, you can.
Can I just do that now?
Sure.
Okay, so old business. We had a facility meeting last week with TDA just to, just to get some updates on where we stand currently. And I think at the end of the meeting, it was, it was just apparent that through nobody's, it's nobody's fault. It's just the fact that we are, we have so many outstanding questions yet when it comes down to costing of a new facility, that we are not really ready for a July vote for a November election. And the fact is, like, I wrote some of the things down that I didn't feel like we had addressed appropriately when it comes time for determining how much a facility will cost. Like, we haven't done our, our POR needs more refining and more refined discussion. We haven't talked about the fieldhouse, whether or not that's going to be an asset or whether or not it's going to be kind of in the, I don't want to say in the way, but if it's going to impede where we actually place a facility. We haven't talked about athletic field placement. That is going to make a big difference on cost. We haven't talked about our performing arts facility to the extent that we need to have those conversations on how big we want to make it, if we want to have, for example, an additional black box theater or something to that effect, and what the programming would be around the performing arts. We haven't talked about slightly else. So there was just a lot of conversation that we felt was missing, and that if we really want to do this right for the community, that we felt we needed to wait, slow down a little bit, because to have all that done in the next six weeks is like an insurmountable task for the administrative folks that are here. And so we just decided, okay, so there's really no downside to waiting until next year. We could go in May. We could go the following November. We should be able to be ready for that point. So that was, that was the consensus that we had made. So we probably will not be bringing that to the agenda for July, for November levy.
Anything else?
There was just a lot of things that we felt like we hadn't discussed.
A lot of this is more fine tweaking. I mean, we, the plan's been the same all along to build the six through 12 campus, but then you start looking at the performing arts center. Are we going to seat 500? Are we going to seat 1,000? Are we, you know, athletic facilities, you know, do we, you're entitled to three gyms, one for middle school, one for high school, and auxiliary gym, but we have the fieldhouse. Do we need that many gymnasiums? Does that make sense? If that might make sense, kind of hammering out those details. And as far as educational programming, are we going to have new programming? What are we going to do standard school that we offer now? So you kind of, I have a lot of things to consider.
So I think at the end of that meeting, when we had determined that, okay, so we're really, we're just not there yet. So much more to do. We haven't had an opportunity to talk to the community yet and see what kind of things they had wanted. And I think TDA has done a really fabulous job of bringing all this stuff to the table and making us think about things. And I think that having these meetings is something that we did not do previously when we did the elementary schools. So I know, I have appreciated having that and, and, you know, having a board voice there. We've, we've really, people have put in a lot of effort and a lot of work. And so we've come extremely far, and I think way farther than, than we had been with our elementaries again. And so, like, at least for me, I'm very confident that at the end of the meeting, the goal was, let's revise the calendar. Let's see where we're going from here. What kind of things do we have to discuss? And we're going to continue along the path. And I really feel like when it comes down to it, we could possibly be ready for a May ballot. And at the end of the day, 2020, the May ballot will be a primary. So there's really no downside to doing that or, you know, like deciding to go in November. So, I mean, if we did it in May, we'd still be able to, you know, start to sell our bonds and possibly still start construction the same time as if we had passed something this November. So I just wanted the board to feel comfortable that, that these conversations are moving forward. It's just that there's just so much to talk about. I mean, even when you just consider the site layout was huge consideration. So.
We're talking, obviously, more larger number, too. So I know we, through the L program, we get, we'll get, potentially, we'll get credited about 9% back, but there's so much more in terms of the local funded initiatives that we have to consider, too. And basically, what that means is the OFCC will not credit us 10% of the cost of those certain features like auditoriums and things like that. So we have to be real careful on what we, how we, what we develop and how we pay for.
And we don't want to be, yeah, we don't want to be in a position with the high school and a larger facility that we're kind of, we're backed into a corner a little bit with our elementaries when we found ourselves, you know, like with, with cost estimates that, you know, we got into a little bit of a stick with some of those. I mean, we're turning out, it's turning out to be just fine, but we wanted to make sure we had better cost estimates and so on.
And not to go into great detail, but we do have another public entity that may be interested in, in purchasing our buildings. We haven't inhaled though, and we'll give the board more information as we move along.
So all in all, I think everybody's been doing a really awesome job on the whole project so far. So.
Thank you. Anything else for old business? All right, that will take us to new business. If anyone has anything. I wanted to bring up employee recognition. I know that, you know, years ago, before the cuts, we used to do some kind of, my understanding is some kind of more in-depth employee recognition. I wanted to talk about potentially trying to get that back to something that we do at Riverside. I was looking at the sign on the back with the pursuing greatness and getting better every day and things like that. And I would like to see us doing more with our employees and actually really recognizing not only years of service, because I think that's an important thing to recognize, but some of the great things that are happening in our classrooms, too, and seeing if that isn't something that for the end of next school year that we know that we can start looking at, working through our personnel committee and things like that to start bringing back some kind of formal recognition for our employees each year.
Through our departments?
Yeah.
We used to have a, this time of year, retirement get-together with our LEA. And by the wayside, when we went through our cuts.
Right.
Which is kind of interesting because I was going to bring up to the board that one of the only things left that we haven't brought back from our original cuts was coaching. That's another one.
It's an important one. Isn't, I think it goes a lot with the culture that we're trying to build and things like that as well. Any other new business from anybody? All right, that will take us to the Board of Education Committee and liaison reports. The first is the superintendent's business advisory. Tomorrow is the senior project fair. There's a meeting 30 minutes prior to that, I believe, right at 6:30. And then the senior project fair at 7:00. Is it in the fieldhouse again this year?
I think it is. I'm not sure. I think it is. I think we have, the numbers are so large that I think they're going to be open.
It was last year. It was packed last year, too.
But see, he's, he left.
He did.
Nick's looking it up.
It would be on his, uh, date name.
I didn't even think of that. I was going to just poke my head and show them if they weren't there. It's a good question.
It definitely was last year.
Yeah.
So I believe it probably is again this year. But that's it for that report. That would take us to, Nick, if you find it, let us know.
Yeah, I got, I'm going through 1,000 emails here.
Will it be on our management board?
I think it should, yeah.
Okay, while we're waiting on that, why don't we go to curriculum and programming and boosters?
Okay. May 22nd, we had a curriculum programming meeting. We were discussing that there may be a development of some elementary department leadership teams. There may be some new types of technology curriculums being introduced in, I think it was six to 12, right? Six to 12. And our math program, envision math, is looking like it's going to be online and ready to go for this next school year. Doing some teacher training with that. Steve, anything else?
No, you hit all the highlights.
Anything else? Okay. Under the booster organization, we had a meeting last week. And first of all, I just want to say that all the booster clubs are under a lot of change this year and getting ready for the consolidation of our district. And it was pretty exciting to see from where we started out, questioning what are we going to do, how are we going to divide things, how are we going to start off the next, next school year with the new buildings. And by the end, here we are in the spring, and we have boards already set up for the four elementary buildings. And they have a plan on how they're going to distribute what funds they have left. They are even already put on the calendar to Easter egg hunt. So.
Okay.
A great, great year. And I appreciate all the hard work from all the booster clubs across the district. And I've, they're definitely the backbone of our extracurriculars.
Absolutely.
That's it.
All right, thank you. Finance, auto, personnel, and strategic plan.
So finance and personnel had a meeting last Wednesday at bright and early at 7:00 a.m. We talked about the potential sale of our had and inhaled properties just very briefly. We talked about the upcoming demolition of Madison Avenue School and when that would be scheduled and the pricing of that. We talked about the five-year forecast, which I, Mr. Plattco is going to review with us very shortly. We talked about some of our enrollment figures for next year and moving forward in the enrollment survey that had been done for our high school project and how that they're always too low, and we always think that they're too low, and they never really come out to be that way. So we talked about that. We talked about open enrollment for next year and how that's going and how that's proceeding. And then we also talked about the EMIS procedural changes that are going to be taking place that we feel are going to be better for us through the, that's like ESE.
Like JAG.
Like JAG ESE. And so those are the things that we talked about. We had a meeting for about an hour, and that was it.
What are our, our open enrollment numbers? Are they up this year?
I don't know. We haven't looked at it yet.
I have a slide on the five-year forecast that kind of compares what they are for this school year and for that school year. We kind of look at that during the presentation. But as far as for next year.
Yeah, they, they close at June first, so we have to start.
I think I mentioned at one of our meetings, I can't remember whether or not it was at a committee meeting or a board meeting about the, that we're required to go through an enrollment projection. And the company comes in and they figure out in years ahead, like whatever enrollment's going to be. And always thought it was different, almost trended the opposite way. I did put a request in to Healy, the company that does this. They did give me some information. I received it today, going back to 2010, I think it was 2013, 2016. I just haven't had time to analyze the numbers. But I think it might be interesting to just go through and see what they, what they projected and what it really was. I do believe that the company did some projections back in the 2000s. And those, those I did not get, I think it's the same company. If not, I'll try to pursue what those were as well to see where we were. I do know in the last projection, I think it was in 2010, I think they said we were going to be at 5,500 because we're at 5,000 about at that time. And we have, we've gone down. But my concern was, what happens if we go up? So it's kind of the opposite.
Well, and those, those enrollment estimates play, have a big play in our cost and what we get back from the state for our high school and middle school project. And so, you know, we want to make sure those are accurate. And if we have any disagreement with those, we would have to be looking at that. I think, I think they were down like eight, was it 800 and, 800 and some over the course of their, you know, five-year or eight-year that they are looking at when we look forward for when we're doing our enrollment projections for the high school and middle school project.
I mean, in all fairness, I did look at a couple of numbers, and I did get into it a little bit more. I think it was a little bit more accurate than I thought. Maybe not spot on, but I think, I think they were, I was more concerned, I think, of the numbers that we received back in the 2000s when we had a bond up, I think, in '03 and '05. Both failed, but we had projections done back then. So probably gives a good snapshot of where we are and what these companies think where we'll be in a few years.
So that, and I don't have anything, I don't have any updates on the strategic plan, so that's all I have.
Okay. Buildings and grounds, operation, alumni.
All right. I did attend the May Association meeting. They are working diligently on the Hall of Fame, trying to figure out which of the nominees will be selected. They've also worked very hard in raising money. One of the, the issues we have this year, and we're still, they're still trying to work it out, is that we always had the Duck Race, which was a joint venture between Harvey Alumni and Riverside Alumni Associations. And now we do have the Harvey game. So we're trying to work through that and see how we might, because we would sell tickets the night before, and the, the event was actually the day after, it was the Saturday after the game. So they're still working through those issues and need to bring Harvey into the conversation. Additionally, they did receive a number of applications for the various alumni association scholarships. And so we'll hear about those coming on, I guess, Sunday. So that'll be good. We did not have a buildings and grounds. I was able to stop over at the, at Parkside earlier in the week to take a look at the windows. There were a number of buildings or rooms that had windows, looking very good. And as Chris mentioned earlier, when the window's going in, then everything else can be finished. So we are moving well there. There will be a June meeting, but I am. There will be a June meeting, but I am waiting for Mr. Wainer, maybe I missed an email.
Not me, actually. We have a, we're going to talk tomorrow.
Correct.
Today he called me and I was in the middle of something. I told him I'd talk to him tomorrow.
Sure.
But we are going to have the HBAC company there also.
I contacted them to recommend and be happy to do a show for us. I'll throw out a date of June 11th at 7:00 in the morning, if that works.
So, I, I sent an email saying that, that's 10 through the 13th is out for me.
Oh, and we'll find another date.
Okay. So, okay? Or that'd be, that'd be...
They're, they're easygoing. They said whatever works, so.
Okay.
We'll nail something down.
Okay, terrific. Yeah, I don't know if you wanted to relay anything regarding the summer work or anything else?
Well, where we are right now is getting ready for the, getting into Madison Avenue, getting the generators out. I, I talked today about, there's a PA system that was a couple of years old at Madison Avenue and looking to move it over to Buckeye. There's some cameras that were outside. They were donated, so I was looking to see if I could move them to Buckeye from Madison Avenue. But that's not how it worked out. They're going to give it back to the gentleman that donated them. But I think we're going to be able to work it out to get a PA system that's updated over to Buckeye. So, we're working on that today. Other than that, we have the kids all ready to go. We started a couple of summer workers. Started in the yards and just excited to get going for the summer. So, we're in pretty good shape, I think.
Do you have a question?
I was thinking of a question regarding the summer work.
Sure.
There, there's a product that they've been advertising on news, news that they said that wasn't good for, good?
Roundup.
Roundup?
Roundup.
Are we using that or are we aware of that?
Well, we just got two gentlemen certified in the district to take care of our weed control, bee controls, to save money. And I'm going to discuss with them the products that we're using to find out where we are with Roundup.
In order to spray pesticides in and around schools, we have certified.
And we do have gentlemen now that are licensed.
Yes.
One that does the campus and then one gentleman that does the rest of the district and Lamuffe. We've started, but we don't want to do any spraying while we have kids around. And I just happened to catch one of the Roundup saga and I'm confident that if we have to switch to do something else, that we can do that.
Good.
Okay.
But I thought it was a joke at first and then I found out it wasn't, so.
Mr. Wainer, thank you. Good to go. Thank you.
All right. Policy and legislative?
Unfortunately, this time I have nothing to report, no meeting.
That takes us to the Superintendent's Report. Mr. Kales.
All right. I have a couple of things. I wanted to update the board on our band bleachers and pass out a... The original estimate for the band bleacher was about $125,000. And that's an I-beam type of construction with footers built up into the slope of the, up into the slope near the track, where the runoff is for the 100-meter. And so, what was interesting is they, the estimate became double. It was around $250,000 because of the time of year. I guess there's a shortage of I-beam construction. I was given all kinds of reasons and I said, "Well, that's not going to fly. There's no way in the world we're going to spend $250,000 on band bleachers." And that they'd have to come up with another design. So, we met several times with CT Consultants. And we kind of went back to our original plan is to build a big concrete pad on top of where the slope is, the flat area. The district was going to move the fence and they were going to build a very similar type of stands that we had when the pad was on the football field prior to the turf fund. And so, we were able to get it down to about $110,000 to trim it out. We're going to be probably closer to the 125 we originally estimated. What you see is a, as a rendering. The nice thing about this is there's two things. Number one is the band has an area that's going to be a little bit larger than what they had in terms of their original location. Their old one was 10 rows and it had about 780 feet of linear feet for the kids to sit. Up in the stands, like in the picture that we have on the, on the, on the wall, when we put the students up in the stands, existing, stands only have 21 rows with 26 feet, linear feet per row, for 546 feet. That's one of the reasons why we did couldn't put them up in the stands, because they were going to be too tight. The new stands, we're going to either have 11 to 12 rows and we're going to have anywhere between 800 Navy and 960 feet for a little bit of growth, too. We put it out on RFQ on Friday. It's supposed to be up for two weeks. We did that prior to talking to the board, only because if something comes up, we can always reject the bids, but we wanted to get on this. Right now, they say that they're not necessarily, they can't guarantee that this will be done by our first game. If that's the case, we'll put them up in the stands or we'll set up the chairs until this is done. But what we did is we, we, we didn't, the original plan had this, these stands, and they're angle irons, not the I-beams, on the concrete pad. We, we enlarged the concrete so they can also have a hospitality area that they always have after performing. Give them enough space to do that. And we're kind of excited about it. The only thing I don't like about it is where the location is. We might have to take down a couple of trees, which I don't like doing, as Mr. Wainer can tell you. Unless the tree is dead, we don't take them down. So, right now, RFQ is out. We're estimating around $125,000 and we're hoping to get it done by the first game. The first game we have is the way up here. Second is home with Kirtland. And then we have Rhyma in the place of Green. I can't remember if that's somewhere away. Our first home game is our second week, which is September 6th.
A lot of the tailgate as well.
Mr. Kales, the concrete pad, that, the 110, does that include the pad? What is the cost of the pad?
It does. The estimates, I have it somewhere in here. For concrete slab, we have estimated, yeah, it's, now, this is, this isn't what the, I don't think it includes how we enlarged it, but originally it was 4,800 square feet and we had around $30,000. 28/8 was an estimate.
So, so with $30,000, my point is, if we're over on our new buildings, and I, I went behind the old Madison, the old school over in Concord where the old, old bleachers are currently. My point is, if we're putting a, a concrete pad there, why can't we put the stands that we took down just two years back up there? And save $110,000?
Well, we, we wanted to make sure, we talked about this with CT Consultants. We also spoke to our maintenance department about it. We, we took those apart. There's a lot of parts that need replaced. And from what I understand, the stadium was built in 2002. So, we're looking at, you know, stands that are pretty old right now. In terms of safety and everything else, we're better off with that size of stands, making sure that they're new and they're going to support the kids that are on it. Otherwise, we'd have to try to find a way to put it back together and, and it's old.
Everybody's okay with the placement?
Yeah, I talked to Mr. Schwartz. They're very excited about it.
Awesome.
I just think with, that we could use that money and put towards the new buildings. With the stands, I believe, since we do have the old ones, that we never did try to see if they are usable again. I know that they're sitting there. I know that if we did use them, it was two high school students that took them down, then I'm quite sure they could put them back up.
I, I don't know. I, like I said, I know a little bit that the, when they're not I-beam constructed, there's a lot more, a lot more parts like this one's going to be. And my litmus test is, if I wouldn't want my own kids sitting in them, then I'm not going to put any of the Riverside kids in on those stands either, if I think that they're old enough where, I, I just wouldn't chance it.
Yeah, I agree.
Plus, we have a, like I said, a whole new facility there. I think what, one common thing is that when we're discussing what might be in the next few years in terms of the 612 complex, that most likely the stadium and the, and the field are staying. That's, you know, I mean, there's a question about some of the other parts of our facilities, but that's one thing that we think they're going to be there. And I hope this serves our, our kids for another 20 years, so we don't have to do it. All I'm looking at is the fact that if those old stands lasted almost 20 years, that these stands, all they have to last is about 12 years and it'll pay, pay back what we put into it. Because to, to get the, the rentals, and today's cost is about $10,000 a season, correct?
Yes.
And that's with moving them on and off of the field. They're an eyesore and it, it blocks the view.
Well, they didn't look very sturdy either.
This, this can also be, serve as a, a stands for track. You know, it's right where the, the pit is for not the, not the high jump, but for the pole vault.
Where exactly are you talking about? Are you behind scoreboard or?
No, no, we're at that end of the field, but we're on the other side of the field. Like, our stands are here.
The home side?
Yes.
Where the B-berdans is.
This is where the B-berdans is.
Okay. Where do you?
Yeah.
It's really not that much farther from where they were.
No, it's just on the other side. They're a little bit higher.
So, then we'd be able to stand on the backside, right?
We know. We'll be there. You and me.
That's where I used to stand, too.
Okay, I can stop walking.
Right?
Everybody can have their spot.
Have their spots back.
We're also going to be digging ground real soon on the Veterans Memorial, too, from what I understand. One other thing, too. I know this is a kind of ongoing, I don't want to say issue, but conversation. I just wanted to give the board some information. I'm not asking the board to take any action on this, but I wanted the board to see the supplemental positions that were eliminated during our reductions. Something we haven't brought back, but just to give you an idea of what it might cost to do so. The positions you see here, although we don't have assistant down, that's what they are, assistant football coach, assistant boys' basketball, assistant girls' basketball, assistant baseball, assistant softball, and assistant volleyball. A lot of varsity assistants now, so they have JV coaches, too, in some of our sports. But our contract has three ranges. You can be, when you're hired at zero to two years, obviously your pay is lower. We also have a three, five-year step, and then we have six or more. So, we have three steps. If you look, I, I put down what it would cost the district to reinstate these positions on the low range and also on the high range and anywhere in between. And the numbers that you see on the bottom are, are just the ones that are listed here. The six positions would be $26,856 on the low end and $35,864 on the high end. So, on the low end, if everyone came in somewhere between zero and two years, that's what the cost would be. And if they came on the high end, six or more years, it would be $35,864. There have been some requests from our current coaches to consider reinstating these positions. Along the line, I think it would be, in long term, it would be better for our sports programs. But as I know, it's something that, that we just can't at a whim decide to do, that there needs to be some more discussion. So, if the board would like me to pursue this further and present to the board with a recommendation, I can. These are based on next year's numbers, uh, to, next year's salary schedule.
So, football, if I get this right, they're down one, one coach?
That's correct.
And basketball's?
Same thing.
Two?
No, one. Girls' basketball, one, baseball, they're all one. Now, mind you, that when we board approved lacrosse, they had, now, they had a lot of kids. They're new and they only have two coaches as well. I did not put them in here because they're relatively new, but in the scheme of things, it might not be a bad idea with the numbers that they have, is to hire another lacrosse coach for each boys' and girls' lacrosse.
And they're at the same pay scale, correct?
And they have more kids.
Right.
They have the same pay scale as soccer.
As a head coach.
They're either 40.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's probably closer to 50 when the season started.
How is that program going in this first year?
Good, I guess.
They were 14 and four, 13, 13 and five varsity finished. And JV, I want to say, finished 11 and that as well, but still winning the season.
A lot of participants, that's for sure. It's a popular, popular school.
They made it to the first round of playoffs, too.
They need another coach.
So, another one would be probably very similar to the range, if you see there.
Yeah.
That concludes my report.
Mr. Platko, you're up.
We have Mr. Halfa.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't have you mark down.
(laughing). It's so right.
Mr. Ha, I know we talked about our new cameras. I asked Mr. Halfa to bring some video of our cameras, kind of show what they do for us.
This might be Fox 8 News, not...
Yeah, I mean, it's timely considering what happened out of Willow East Lake School District. That was horrible. They're lucky that no one got killed. Poor kid, you know?
The first couple that I'll show are obviously the one we were just referring to. And the first one is... This is one that I found on a site that I follow. This is from Minnesota.
Try to run all the way to the right, the link.
That one? They have a camera on the outside bulkhead, that one's for...
Holy cow.
It's hard to watch, isn't it?
Yes.
Two of them.
So, that one was a close call. So, with that, Mr. Platko had applied for some grant money. And on our first grant, we were awarded to upgrade 15 buses. We did hard drives. And along with those, there's four cameras on the inside, and I'll show some of these here in a minute, and two cameras on the outside. They roll all the time. The four on the inside have audio also. Two on the outside are just visual cameras. Able to get a second grant to where we would do 10 buses in our fleet that have no camera systems at all. We'll put the six-channel hard drives in there. You saw the one from, what was it, Lillwick? They had four screens. You'll see ours, they have six screens. Ours also have GPS. They'll tell you where they're going, where they've been, how fast they were going, all the good stuff with those, too. And then with that second grant on those 10 buses, getting all six cameras on those, there are some additional funds that were available, so we're going to upgrade two other buses on those. And then with our five new buses that will be purchased here in July, we'll equip those with the six-camera systems in there. So, at the beginning of next year, we'll have 32 buses with six cameras on them. I think it's 30, six cameras. The two of the shorter buses have two cameras on the inside and two cameras on the outside. So, we'll have 32 buses with cameras on the outside of the buses.
How many buses are on our current fleet?
That, we run now with spares and everything, about 65. So, we'll be right around half the fleet with those. I loaded some pictures up first, just to show some of the stuff on here. As you can tell, we have six cameras. One is pointing out the side door. One is on the bulkhead, right above the driver, pointing out back. And then we have a camera system in the middle pointing back and then above the back door pointing forward. And then the two outside, this is right underneath the stop sign, pointing back towards the bus. This one here is at the top corner of the bus, pointing down. This camera here is made for a zoom in, and I'll show a picture of that later. But this also, here's one of the violators, and you see the kid is exiting the door. And it also will tell you the signals, in case anything is questioned, that the stop sign was activated and the break was applied.
Mr. Halfa, did you get that camera adjusted?
I, they came back in the original 15... They came back, and the original fifteen that they put in, they adjusted the cameras and they showed us how to adjust them. So they were, they were pointing a little bit too far out, so we had to bring them back in a little bit. And there are some video pictures up here showed on where they used to sit. Not that we missed anything, it was just a tougher angle to see stuff.
Are these screens inside the bus?
Screen?
Like, are, is, are these?
No, that's not my computer.
This is not visible to the bus driver?
No.
Okay.
Just a little circle that the camera is.
Just direct to driving.
It is. However, I will tell you, as a building principal, it is a beautiful video and very clear audio when there is a question of what went on on the bus. I had the opportunity, yeah, Jim, to send me some video last week, and it was, he had it like within a half hour of being to school that morning, it was done, and it's really nuts.
So makes arguments with parents and things like that?
Arguments, yep. Uh-huh. Very clear.
So here's another picture. Route twenty is a busy area for us, people going through the reds, and usually, as you can see, a line of traffic behind her. So once one goes through there, I'll show you a video, they just start following right along with, obviously, we have a four-lane, five-lane highway, turning a lane, we don't cross there, but still, you never know what's gonna happen with anything, with a car accident or anything of that nature, so. This one here is the back camera pointing forward, zoomed in, so I can make sure I catch the license plate. And you can actually, as long as the glare isn't bad on the windshield, I can see what you're wearing, what you're doing. Caught a couple of them on their cellphones as they were driving straight through, not paying any attention. Here's another one that I zoomed in, you can see the oh-six, type two at the top for the channel, zoomed right in on that North Carolina plate to be able to pick it out. It was a funky angle, but once I zoomed in, it made it clear. Then here's another one. I put this one in here, as you can see the clarity on this, somebody was burning something over here, so you can see the smoke coming up in there. I mean, the clarity on these are just real nice. And then I got some videos in here if they will play. They're only, each of them, I made them only about ten seconds long, and these are what I can pull out of the recordings and then just send off.
That's twenty?
Yeah. So one went through, here's the second one, and then here comes the third one, and then finally, somebody decided to stop.
We couldn't find that guy.
And then this one here, we were actually stopped for a while. Kid got to about the door, and then the car decided to drive right through.
It goes to Lake County Sheriff's Office or the Highway Patrol, and where do you report that to then?
I've been sent to State Highway Patrol.
So we've been able to make enforcement action on most of these violators. And those that run the traffic lights, that's a, they have to, it's a mandatory quarter payment appearance, so they have to go in front of the judge, they just can't pay the fine. So they have to explain it to the judge.
That's great.
What's a typical explanation?
I was late and went away?
Sometimes, you hear quite a bit, the ones that you recently sent over, I've been handling most of them. Most of the time, they're late for work, or they're too close to the bus and they're not sure what to do, so their first reaction, instead of waiting for the bus driver to make that determination whether to go or stay, they just take it upon themselves and just leave, just go. And then the one over, I thought you sent over to me on by thirty-five, the kid, the young man, he dropped his cellphone, and he went to lean over to pick it up, the bus was stopped, and by the time he got up to get the phone, he was halfway past the bus. He actually received two citations, the violation for the stop, stop school bus, and also for distracted driving. So he has to answer to Judge Chicken Eddie on that.
Like, these folks find me a little more than others, 'cause, I mean, they don't even slow down whatsoever. This guy is, wow. They were flying through.
Where's this?
This is West Jackson.
West Jackson.
You know, and those yellow lights are on for so long, there's no reason why.
Right. Right. Throat's up, right?
And what it is, we act, we equip them approximately three hundred feet before we stop. And a lot of, I have several of these, and, you know, they say they don't know where to stop, but I have, more than half the ones that I've sent over for violators, the kids are standing out there waiting, so by saying that you don't know where to stop, you see where the kids are standing. Some of them drive right by the kids.
And it's the same time every day. I could pass, I'd stop for the same bus every day on my way out, like, to go to work, and I know it's there, and I know what's gonna stop.
I can't say, Mr. Halfa, you've been doing a great job at that, and the Sheriff's Department and the Highway Patrol's also been doing a great job at enforcing the violations. And I just say, keep, keep doing what you're doing for our school and for the safety of our students there.
That's great.
Since we've got these, put them in, I know I've probably sent over about twenty of them, and, you know, sometimes it's, you know, here's a, here's a close one, and they'll review it also, and, you know, they'll just go talk to them and stuff of that nature, but they might not get a citation for it. But probably somewhere around a dozen, I would say, were pretty blatant. I put four of them up there like that. I've been doing this for fifteen years, I don't think I've ever sent over.
This many?
Fifteen in fifteen years, much less well, in about a month span. And the, what it kind of is, is a driver, I saw that one, you know, going through very fast, the school bus driver's trying to keep the kids safe, they gotta get a description of the vehicle, description of the car, the license plate number, and keep the kids safe. It's not gonna happen, so there's a little marker that's on there, a little button on the inside of the bus. The bus driver will make sure the kids are, are safe, they hit that marker, I go right to it, I find out where it is, just remind it a little bit, it's right there, we find them, I send them over. It's a process that takes me about five minutes.
That's great.
Cool.
Obviously, secondary to the safety, which is paramount, is to Dr. Malakar's comment about issues on the bus. It's not structured time, you know, the bus drivers are trying to keep the kids safe and drive, but, you know, every once in a while, you have an issue on the bus, and you hear two sides of the same story, and the video doesn't lie. And it has put to rest a lot of, you know, we don't have to investigate as much as we would had we not had the video on there.
That's great.
It's clear, and you can hear.
And three words.
And now having, you know, half the fleet with the cameras and, you know, hopefully, you know, keep that trend going. I know it's been very fortunate, and Gary's done awesome with getting the grants and everything, and we've got everything, for the most part, installed in a timely manner, and it's helped tremendously with not only the stuff inside, but the outside of the bus. Bus drivers get very frustrated, especially on Route twenty, of so many people going through there, and they wanna make sure the kids are, are safe. And they always come in, I couldn't get the license plate, but, you know, if I had those cameras, well, now we have the cameras, and now we are getting the license plate, so people are gonna learn quick, you know, just stop in thirty seconds. If you stop, you know, we move quickly.
Do you have one on your bus yet?
Nope. And man, I'll tell you what, if, you saw that, mine is five times, in Heidley Park.
Yeah.
And that's to help develop, and so.
The next grant, he'll, his bus will be one that gets it on the, when we get those ten that will have cameras on them, his will be one of those ten.
Because like you said, you used to have to have the name, address, phone number, and eye color, the guy gets it going, you know, you don't even know. I mean, you're looking at the kid, you're, you're, well, Jim knows, you're, make sure the kid's safe, then I stop to the stop sign. I'm stopped, when he turns a corner, my, my lights are on and kids are private, he turns a corner.
And Jim, when we have, with the old ones, we had these old VCRs that probably was awful, but we also had the ability to move camera from bus to bus so long as it had that adapter. Now, we can't do that with these buses, but if we have an issue that needs a camera, we'll just swap out buses.
Yes, I have done that. We do, some of the original ones were the, I don't wanna say the older DBRs were in, but we did three of them and upgraded those in that first fifteen, so I do have spares that I can rotate through for those. I've had a couple of drivers come in and said, you know, I got a hotspot over here, you know, there, it's not a good situation, so we put them in that spare for a few days. I've done that a couple of times.
And the first grant was an automatic grant that all districts got for school safety, and they had to choose what they spent it on. The second grant they were referring to is that workers' compensation one, where we got the thirty-five thousand and change for that, and then there's a forty thousand, even up to forty thousand dollars, we're applying for the last forty, four hundred dollars. It might take about sixteen weeks to get an answer on it, but assuming, we're assuming we're gonna get, since the first ones were approved, I wouldn't approve for two more buses, these remaining.
Did part of that money go to Raptor, too?
No, we decided to do that per approval. But we thought about it, just beginning, I had to wait, it was a sixteen-week process to get approval, and we wanted to make sure that was ready for next school year.
The Raptor system is a system, when you visit a school, they run your ID through it, and they can tell whether or not you should be in and around kids.
So like the Shartan one?
We have one here at the high school, now we're gonna put them in all the other schools this next year. And it also prints out a visitor's.
Yeah, so Shartan does, and it's got your picture on it.
Career Center does it, too.
That's great. Thank you, Jim. That's fabulous.
Okay.
Keep going.
All right. The Bureau of Workers' Compensation also recently announced the one point five billion back to public employers. They've been doing this now, this is probably the, at least the fifth year they've done this, which my thought is why, charge us less instead of giving us back funds. So they're, they're gonna return eighty-eight percent of two thousand seventeen's workers' compensation, plus the premium, and that's about a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars we'll get back from workers' comp, probably come sometime over the summer. The state budget, the House version of the state budget passed in early May, basically taking the governor's proposal, they added a little bit more money to the wraparound services amounts. So right now, based on the House-approved budget, looking at an additional hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars for next school year for wraparound services counts and things like that. And in the following fiscal year, about two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars that year, which is about thirty-seven thousand dollar increase from the governor's proposal. The Senate's still working on their version of the budget, so it could be the same as, as the House, it could be the other school funding formula, the cup pad or someone that we've talked about a few times before that's still out there as well. Not sure what direction everyone's gonna go, it might be going the current version and then maybe implementing that in another biennium or maybe a year from now, we're not sure.
But the budget is due by the thirtieth of June, correct?
Right.
So they have a limited time, but they.
They write it down to June thirtieth every year, and then we know our funding on June thirtieth, but it'll be on July one, starts the next biennium. We also received notice from Department of Medicaid, they are finalizing our two thousand seventeen cost settlement report. We're expecting two hundred and seventy thousand dollars from Medicaid in two thousand seventeen. That might get paid in June, maybe, probably more likely in July, depending on the timing they have to affect the five-year forecast. Also, we talked about last meeting, the letter I sent to the county auditor, I actually received a response today, and Madison had gotten one as well. Their response was basically, it was only a day late, according to their records, and that we'd be entitled, this is a weekend, we'd be entitled three days of interest at the county treasurer raising at point six-three percent, so four hundred and eighty-seven dollars is what they're saying we're entitled to from delay compared to what I think is ten thousand six hundred dollars from a fifteen-day delay at two point five seven, which is what we can earn in Star Ohio. Several treasurers in Lake County have organized a meeting with the county auditor, we meet this Thursday, I think at two PM, to kinda discuss the issue of new settlement reports and the timing of payments and things like that. So I will give an update at the next meeting on results of that meeting. And they wanted to go over the construction budget real quick before we go into the five-year forecast. Let me get these passed out. Okay, and the first sheet, the double-sided sheet that I passed out, is just an update, a list of the pens of the change orders that are approved out there so far. So we're up to forty change orders for Concord and thirty-six for Madison. Nothing real big, a little changes, tweaks here and there have been happening. Obviously, our biggest change order was for the ballistic glazing and security vest you brought from a few months ago, but everything else that's been recent has just been little minor tweaks, like furniture and sensory room changes and HVAC changes and like a driver location scanning system. We're gonna go with the Raptor system, so we're having, getting a credit back, which is enough to cover the cost of the Raptor system for all school buildings in Riverside. It was kinda funny that they must have had a much more elaborate type of system built into the, into the construction, so we got a credit back of thirty-nine hundred dollars for one, for thirty-nine hundred dollars per school. And the Raptor system was about eight thousand total to do it district-wide, so it kinda covered the cost of that. The two-page handout is just an update on the construction funds right now. Our current cash balance is just shy of twenty million dollars left in the bond fund. Listed below are all the outstanding purchase orders, which are results of change orders and things like that. Total on the next page, unfortunately, I can't get the, on that page. So total outstanding purchase orders, nineteen point five million, just shy of, so our balance right now is five hundred and one thousand dollars in our construction fund. That's what we have left to, to pay for the Madison Avenue demolition, which is on tonight's agenda. That came in, total cost is four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. We talked about the finance committee, one of the things I didn't realize, the demolition came within budget, but I didn't account for, we have to pay for Icon's time for the construction manager to be there for August, August and September and October. So the cost was a little bit higher than I anticipated, just because I didn't realize we had, that wasn't built in the original construction contract. After talking to them, they made some staffing changes, they dropped it down about twelve thousand from the original price they gave me, to see where we are now. So that, with the main legal cost and the demolition cost, brings our balance down to about seventy thousand. On the PI funds, where we have portion of the furniture, music furniture and appliances, that's about one point two million on the PI fund, so it puts us at a total overage of about one point one million right now before demolition. When you factor, if we were demolish all three buildings, we'd be about two point five million over budget, which is trending about where we've been since day one, we've kinda been between two point three and two point five million. Obviously, if we were able to sell, had and inhale, it's, might be a good possibility of that, and we'll discuss that later. Obviously, I'll cut off a lot of our budget issues, and also, this is an account for any additional interest revenue that we're receiving on that twenty million dollars, you know, through the end of the project. Obviously, each month we're paying two to four million dollars, the Icon for the construction fees, so the interest revenue is kinda unpredictable, because we're making large draws on the funds, but we should get, you know, a little bit more interest as time goes on, but obviously, now we're there, what the overage of that. And then obviously, if we sell, the proceeds we get from that will also further up the budget situation. At the bottom, it's just a recap, Chris Houston went over the construction manager, contingency. Right now, we have three hundred and nine thousand dollars left, there's a contingency with the furniture, contingency with the demolition, so it's three hundred and nine thousand dollars left, and that pays for like overtime for Icon, the work weekends, and things like that. So we're expecting to get at least a hundred thousand of that back is what I'm thinking, possibly more. Right now, it's trending each building, you know, about five thousand dollars a month for overtime, but they're gonna probably start ramping up things as, as the summer comes, 'cause we gotta be done on time and to not use those contingency funds and not finish on time. Part of the big question is what's, what's remaining, 'cause there's always change orders flying around. We know we have to relocate the downhill side, downhill sign at Concord has been, they've been going back and forth for months with ODOT, and exactly what that needs to be, we expect that cost to be about fifteen thousand dollars. Also, the, once the building is weathered with the windows, they have to test the first responders, the radio systems, make sure it works with inside the building. If it doesn't, there's a system we have to put in so the first responder radios work, and that, that could be the last larger change order that's possible, and I'm not sure if the cost is sixty thousand total or sixty thousand per building. And I'm not sure if the cost is 60,000 total or 60,000 per building, so I'll have to clarify what that is. But they'll do that test probably sometime later in June. They will know this summer if we have to put in that additional infrastructure. We are though expecting a credit back of about $20,000 because we changed some color of the metal from a custom color to a stock color. There's about a $20,000 credit coming from Icon on that. And as I mentioned before, there's interest revenue for May through October, November on the remaining funds as we draw those down. That's not reflected either. So it's fluid, it's moving, but we've been trending about the same place as we've been for about a year and a half now.
So I have a question. If we happen to sell Hail and Haddon, those monies will then, like, do we have to designate those funds or do they actually just get to go right into the permanent improvement fund?
They would go into a permanent improvement fund, which would help offset these costs.
They won't go into this, they have to go into a special fund, correct?
They can, yeah, but you can still use them.
But you can still use them towards these things that we've encountered.
Right. Fix some accounting, but yeah, we can use it to offset these costs.
Mary, what was the estimate for the Haddon and, and Hail?
The, for Haddon, the total cost for Haddon, including architect fee, is about $305,000. The total demo and abatement for Hill Road is $939,000 because of the asbestos. So that's 1.4 million, almost 1.3 million would be the savings by not demolishing those buildings. And then.
And then getting sale.
Whatever we sell those for would help offset the cost.
Terrific, thank you.
Any questions on that? Okay, maybe five-year forecast. A lot of this presentation is similar to the last ones I've done with a lot of stuff till over May. So I'm going to go kind of quickly through it since a lot of it's routine. I'll post this on the, on the website on the treasurer's page that anybody can refer to if I look through some of the slides. First slide here is just a link to guidance that ODE puts out about how to read five-year forecast. Just some general information. Always a disclaimer, it's based on best information available at the time it's prepared. It's now, used to be done in October, in May, now November is the new deadline based on the new laws that went into effect. The current forecast shows 2016 through 2018 historical and then fiscal years 2019, which is the current fiscal year through 2023. It's important to read the notes to go with the forecast and also that our forecast includes both the general fund and the Lake County School Financing District. Executive overview, we're solving through the end of fiscal year 2023, which is line 7.02. We expect deficit spending to start in fiscal year 22, a couple of years out. And that's where your expenditures exceed your revenues, which is line 6.01. Did I not pass that? I thought I passed it. I didn't pass. It would have helped if I passed it out to you guys so you can look at the forecast on the paper.
I can set your own data just this year.
It's a secret.
Sorry.
Too much paper.
I figured they don't want to see those lines.
Yeah, it would be very helpful. Okay, so fiscal year 2020, next fiscal year is obviously a new biennium budget coming up. You know, we're still waiting on what that's going to look like. And then fiscal year 2022 is another biennium budget. And it will continue to monitor future possible reductions in state funding. We're actually first time ever looking at an increase, which is, doesn't happen often. And then we're also looking to continually monitor staffing levels. We adjusted staffing levels in the forecast for what we believe are the savings from the new buildings, you know, until we get operating, might be some tweaks to that or if we have a spike in kindergarten and things like that, there might be some adjustments, but we think we're, we're pretty close on those estimates. This is, this is a short overview of the full five-year forecast. So you can see in fiscal year 2019, our current fiscal year, we started with a beginning balance of 8.9 million. We expect revenues of 47.9 million, expenditures at 44.7 million, which leaves a revenue surplus of 3.1 million, bringing our ending balance up just over $12 million. That trend continues a little bit in the next two fiscal years where our cash balance will increase a little bit more. And then 2022, when we anticipate more deficit spending, we'll start the decline of the cash balance. And this is just a graphical form of that last slide. Looking at blues, revenues, red expenditures. The first three sets of bars are historical, 2019. You can see revenues exceeding expenditures by several million. And then that trend continues. Expenditures continue, continue to rise at the same pace, but revenues tend to flatten out based, because property taxes tend to be level and state funding tends to be level. Just a pie graph of, obviously, property tax revenue is our biggest source of revenue. And then unrestricted grants and aid, which is your state funding, is the second largest one at 19%. We'll go through some of these in a little bit in the slides. Property tax revenue, 27.5 million. It's about 57% of our revenue. We're primarily the residential community at 83.49%. Looking at our tax valuation for tax year 2019 at $1,533 million is still lower than it was in 2008 before the Great Recession, but it's almost caught up at this point. Increasing, increase in valuations only result in additional revenue from the inside millage for the district, which is 4.8 mils. And then for the substitute levy, which is now at 4.19 mils on new construction only. All of the revenue, operating levies are in place for continuous period of time. The 4.9 mil levy that was passed in May of 2017 started reflection in the second half of 2018 fiscal year, and that's currently reflecting at 4.56 mils as opposed to a 4.9 when originally passed. And then tax year 2018 was a reappraisal year, and our valuation has increased from 963 million to $1,533 million, or 9.3%. That number included, you know, increases from new construction, changes from border revision process, but also included the reappraisal as well. I don't have a, a breakout of, of what made up each of that pie, but most of that is going to be the reappraisal. And here's just another graph that kind of shows, you know, 14 through 17, our revenues pretty level for property taxes. 18, you see about half of the increase from a new levy based on the diversity between calendar year and fiscal year. And then 2019 through 2023, levels off again about the same level, minor increase due to increased valuations. And I added this slide in here, we used it over here in January, just kind of spells out the different levies of the district. The current general fund millage at 30.37, that, that's the effective rate, the rate that's being collected. And then the PI levy is at 2.31. And then the phase one debt, originally 1.92, is down to 1.56. So our total effective millage is 34.24 right now. And this does not include the, the Lake County School Financing District, which is on the next slide here. This, this slide compares the Lake County School Districts and where we fall, Riverside being the third lowest. Does not include joint financing district, which is collecting at 2.28 mils. So even if you factor that in, that's Riverside, Madison, Perry and Painesville. Obviously, the last, bottom three districts are included in that, so we'd still be at the bottom of three. Unrestricted grants and aids at your state funding, 0.9 million is our projection for this year. It's 19% of our, of our funding. Formula starts at $6,020 a student this year, but is reduced by what's called the state share index. Our state share index based on our property tax, our people, different wealth factors, 21.1%. So we really only see $1,268 per student for regular ed students. We're currently on the guarantee, which means we're basically locked at last year's funding level, even though we're getting more revenue on the guarantee than we would be if we were basically on the formula. And that guarantee right now is calculated at over a million. So it's about, you know, one-eighth of our funding is now the guarantee. So any changes to that guarantee, we have to monitor for, you know, any changes. If they reduce that, that's going to be a reduction in funding. And this line also includes casino tax revenue, which we get about $52 a student on that. And there's just a graphical chart of it kind of leveling off and possibly declining in the future years. This is a quick enrollment head count. My enrollment head count is more conservative than even the OFCC's report, but because we're on the guarantee, we won't see much of a reduction in funding. The only reduction we'd see is the casino tax revenue, which is based on that $52 a student, which is fairly minimal. I honestly think that our enrollment will not reduce by that level and I'll probably adjust that in October. But even if you adjust those enrollment levels, it doesn't change the forecast much because we're on the guarantee. Kindergarten enrollment, this slide's from last time. It's kind of hard to see in the middle. In 2018, our kindergarten enrollment was 184, might be off one or two. And then in 2019 was 234, which we saw an unexpected spike this year. And now, starting next school year with all-day kindergarten and our preschool program, I have a projection of 220. It could very well be higher than that, but just kind of something to monitor. Because what, what the forecast software does, the top line, it shows the live births and basically from five years prior. So in, for example, 2019, there's 297 students that were born in our district according to their data, and we received 234 in the past. And it shows like enrollment gain or loss. So in the past, you see there's a much larger loss from between births and who actually shows up for kindergarten. And this year, 2019, was a dramatic change to that. And with all-day kindergarten, it probably actually changed even more, but it's hard to really project what that's going to do, but we'll, we'll monitor that. And then other revenue, property tax revenue, that one's about 8% of our, of our funding. And that's basically our homestead and roll back on the existing levies from August 2013 and earlier. And this line also included TPP reimbursement, which kind of phased out in 2018 from $3 million in 2011 to zero in 2018 and beyond. And you'll see that in this graph a little bit, this is 2014, the decline in that revenue line and then kind of holding level going forward, slight increase. And then all other revenue, which is 4.4 million projection, that's about 9% of our revenue. And that includes the joint financing district, which is estimated about $2,090,000 for this year. And we have the renewal on the ballot this November. Obviously, not renewing, it's going to be a reduction of $2 million. But also, if, we've been working on, tentatively agreed to a new allocation that would increase our funding from the joint financing district by about $700,000, add no additional millage to the taxpayers. If that goes into effect, that obviously helps the forecast, that's not built into the forecast. And also, that change in allocation protects us from future devaluations of the Perry Nuclear Power Plant. This is another of the things that make up that land, pay to participate fees, $200,000. Open enrollment and the, the students that come from other districts to us, $560,000. Classroom fees, just shy, $200,000. Medicaid reimbursement, $283,000. And then that, that pain I mentioned, that $270,000 for 2017, it might come in this fiscal year, but more likely next fiscal year. So if it comes in this fiscal year, it'll be a little bit better for this year, but then it'll drop in next year. And then interest revenue is now looking at about $250,000 for this year for general fund. And it also includes other small items like kindergarten tuition, which will be no more after this year, but then we'll now have preschool fees going forward for preschool program and manufacturer homes, fines, rental income, things like that.
Is Riverside the only one getting an increase in the joint financing?
Perry would be too, yeah. And then Madison and Painesville would see a decrease. And then this is a graphical reflection of other revenue. In 2018 was the year we got all the Medicaid settlements from 2011 through 2015 or 16, and that's why there was a spike in that year. Expenditures, salaries, benefits and purchase services make up majority of the pie. For salary, 23.2 million, about 52% of our, of our expenditures. And that includes everything. And it includes the cost of substitute teachers. Like I said in the beginning, forecast based on best information available at that time. We have a proposal on the agenda to, to outsource the substitutes through Rachel Wicksey and the ESC in Northeast Ohio. That's not reflected in the forecast, but then with this change, reduce our personnel costs and increase our contracted services. We have our union agreements in effect, teachers union through 2021, classified unions through 2020. Assuming sub-increase is about 3% and administrative salaries and exempt 3% increases. And then the other, the union agreements based on their agreements on where, where we think that's going to fall or built into the forecast. And then looking at adjustments to staffing levels because we have all-day kindergarten and the in-house preschool program. For benefits, 9.9 million, about 22%. Some of those are based on percentages like retirement, Medicare, workers' compensation. Medical insurance, we're assuming about 8% increase per year. Dental vision, about 3%. And then there's some possible changes to the medical insurance coming up, but it hasn't been built into the forecast because they have to be rolled out officially. And the purchase service is about 9.3 million. Some of the biggest costs in there is open enrollment pow, which is about 1.8 million. Community school deductions, 8.6 million. Scholarship deduction, 8.25. Other tuition items, 1.1 million. And then this also includes our utilities, specialized services. We're seeing legal services, insurance and a wide range of things. The open enrollment slide has a lot of numbers on here. I like to look at this, just compare with our state funding locked, open enrollment and charter school deductions is where you can see changes. And as always, Fairport's, they're at 807,000 that they're receiving from us through open enrollment. Painesville City's getting about 472, but we receive 324 for them. So kind of, not quite balances out, but you can see the net loss. On the far right column, you can see the, the change from last year to this year. Our open enrollment deduction increased, it's negative, but increased about 123,000 more as deducted from this year as opposed to last year. So on the right-hand side, just looking at aggregate, 2018 was a loss of 188.8 students, where this year is at 209. And then charter school deductions, community schools, this is comparing 2019 to 2018. And that deduction increased by about 30,000, but the largest increase is the Georgia High Stem High School, which is located in our district. But you can see, there are a lot of reductions across some of the other online schools that, that pull kids from our district. And obviously, now that Ecod has gone away, that was a big one before. There were some residual deduction in 2018, but that's now gone in 2019. Looking at cash balance, ODE says, school districts attempt to maintain a 30, 60-day cash reserve. And then based on our cash balances, you can see that there. This year we're at 75, this year we're predicting about 98 days and a little bit higher the next couple of years. But this is looking at year-end, which is not when our lowest cash balances fall. So the lowest, this next graph here just kind of shows, that green line going across the middle is about two months, 60 days cash balance, 7.5 million. You can see in this fiscal year, in January, we're right at that level. And it's looking at next fiscal year, obviously cash balance is a little bit higher, but it kind of shows usually every January and early February before we get our tax advanced, our lowest cash flow. I know a year or two ago, we, we always had to sit there in January and go, we're going to have to borrow money to make payroll. And that's currently not the case anymore. One interesting thing I wanted to share was Moody's did a, we had our bond issue in 2016, they rated us at A1. And they kind of said, exactly, with the cash balance looking high, they said that the district has a robust financial position, which is notable strength with respect to science rating of A1. The cash balance as a percentage of operating revenues, which is 19%, is slightly lower than the US median, but grew between 2014 and 2018. And our fund balance as a percentage of operating revenues is on par with the US average. So if there's any thoughts of, are we having too much cash at this point, we're probably right about the average nationwide.
Can I give you an update?
Yeah, they did change our rating, even though our financial conditions significantly improved from 2016. But as we look to possibly doing the next bond issue, we're going to try to fight for an upgrade, which will lower our borrowing cost. And then what could change, property tax valuations. We didn't talk about public utility this one. We had that spike in public utility valuation. If that ends up reversing at some point, also. If that ends up reversing at some point, also looking at enrollment spikes. We have the Fairway Pines development, two hundred and fifty-seven homes, I think, are going in there. And also the former Lineco property, which is to the east of Kaiser Park, went by this weekend, they actually started digging out for the roads. I think it's supposed to be a hundred and sixty-six homes going in in that development. So those could cause some enrollment changes. Also funding changes, whether it's additional wellness funds in the governor house proposal, or if the Cut Patterson proposal makes it through, that would be an increase in revenue. And also monitoring future open enrollment policies and the Lake County School Financing District renewal. On expenditure side, just monitoring staffing levels to see if there's any adjustments to that. And then healthcare plan changes and then A changes to community school deductions or open enrollment deductions. And that includes the five-year forecast presentation. Anybody have any questions?
We've included the cost, the additional cost for wellness and crap round services. We've included the costs, not the revenue.
Right, because the cost would be crossroads kind of reference. So that cost is built into the expenditures, but it would be a probably be restricted grants and aid. It's not reflected in the forecast now, waiting for that to finalize. And if that's the direction they finalize this, then it'll be a November forecast.
Are we able to move that expense off?
Right, you can supplant with those new funds. So if you already have certain wellness programs in place, you can use those funds to offset that cost. You don't have to find something new.
Great, any other questions? All right, thank you. That takes us to public participation. Anyone wishing to address Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes. All right, that takes us to the consent agenda. Consent agenda provides for more efficient use of time. Any board member can remove a consent agenda item to be discussed and voted on individually. First up is finance and audit.
So we have a motion to approve the items listed on finance and audit consent agenda as recommended by the treasurer, items A through R. Do you have a second? We have, we have a, just as a point of discussion, we have new substitute management. Can we just briefly explain what we're doing to let the substitutes that we currently have in our district be aware of what their process is going to have to be?
Over the last few months, we've been looking at two different companies. Rachel Wicksey, which is through the Kyle ESC, which is now the ESC Northeast Ohio, or Ren Hill, which is through the Summit County ESC. Looking for them to be the, to manage our substitute teachers. We've had a lot of personality issues recently that, you know, become very time consuming. And these two firms that we were looking at, basically they would employ the subs, substitute teachers. They would handle recruiting, that's what they do all days. They focus on substitute teachers, getting them on board, getting trained, getting recruited, and handle all of the aspects that go into that, including the payroll functions, for locariac reporting, for healthcare, W twos, and all that stuff through them. And what causes is, we look at the two firms and we're recommending to go with the ESC Northeast Ohio, Kyle County, which they have fifty-six districts on board right now. And Fairport and Perry, we're also looking at, they haven't made a final decision yet, but they're looking at moving in the same direction with the same company. So once they get set up, the, to the substitute, they'll still be, they'll still be in our A S O P system. The ESC may be our A S O P manager. So everything down there end will look the same, except they'd now be employees of the ESC as opposed to employee of Riverside. Takes off a lot of administrative burden for us to update A S O P. We have to board for every sub, you know, and those subs that bounce around from different districts in Lake County, they have to become employees of every single district and things like that. If a couple of districts are on board with one firm, like ESC Northeast Ohio, now they can go to different locations by having to fill out new application, all this new paperwork and all this stuff. So it makes things easier for those who want to sub in multiple districts. You know, and they'll take on all of our current subs, they'll all be contacted. On their end, they're just filling out additional paperwork just to get set up on their payroll as opposed to our payroll.
Yeah, I mean, I think basically just our substitutes need to know that they are getting noticed. Rachel Wicksey, that they need to now really roll through them the process. Instead of Lake County ESC, they'll be doing through Rachel Wicksey.
It's kind of a win-win for everybody, let's face that. I mean, we don't have to do all the paperwork associated with all those, you know, short-term personnels, personnel. And then, but the substitutes will also have more options out there because they'll be able to like go online and look for all of those districts.
Oh, yeah, they'll be a much larger pool.
Right, so I think it's beneficial for everybody.
And for us as well.
Because now it's the substitute, you know, they're working here and then there's a position at Mentor for a day. Now you all fill out new application over there, all set up. And then if you sub in three districts in one pay period, you get paychecks from three different places.
So technically, they can go anywhere in Northeast Ohio that is with this organization.
There's fifty-six of them right now. They employ over two thousand substitute teachers. And the goal is to, that they help us fill rates as well and recruit, make sure we have enough substitutes to cover those. Instead of having teachers doing class coverage and other workarounds when they can't fill.
And for the individuals that want to just do Riverside, there's no concern with them not being able to do that. They would still be our substitutes.
We're still to designate our preferred subs.
Yeah, the teachers won't notice anything different. I mean, they'll still have the same pool.
That's nice, because we have a lot of family, like a lot of people from our district that substitute within our district, so.
Does it standardize pay or? It's ours.
It's ours?
Yeah. They really, they won't miss anything. I mean, they still have our rates and everything. We want to increase our rates in a year or two or five years down the road, they increase for us, so. They get paid exactly the same. So in other words, you know, our tiers, you know, you're here for sixty days, ninety days, you know, they go up just a second.
And it's a lot of work to come in those days.
Yeah.
And making sure that, okay, the substitute's on day sixty and not sixty-one, so their rate's ninety instead of ninety-five or whichever.
Other than that, I just want to thank Mallard's PTO, who donated funds to the two books, one district program for the elementary schools. So thank you for that. If there's no other discussion on items A through R, can we call the roll?
Glenda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Motion carried. Personnel.
We have a motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A through M. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion on any of these items? All right, Matt, can you call the roll, please?
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Glenda Grassi?
Aye.
Motion carried. Tom, can you read item O, please?
Sure. For item O, personnel recommended part of the consent agenda, item O, similar work registration. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Can you call the roll, please?
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Glenda Grassi?
Abstain.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Motion carried.
We have a item P on our agenda is athletic supplemental contracts for our middle school. Is there a second?
It's all supplemental.
It's all supplemental. All athletic, oh, I'm sorry, all athletic supplemental, sorry.
I'll second.
Thank you. If there's no discussion on that, can we call the roll?
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
And Abstain?
From high school, I thought it was middle school.
It's all, man.
Okay, Abstain.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Glenda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Motion carried. Curriculum programming?
We have one more.
Where?
We have one more.
We have one more, I have to add this.
On the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby renews the administrative contracts for the following individuals for the terms of years specified. Did you want me to read these?
Yeah.
Okay, Melissa Malacher, three years, Pete Liatzos, three years, Michael Lewis, three years, Nick Orlando, three years, Michelle Walker, three years, Julie Weber, three year, James Hiafa, three year, Dan Weiner, two year, Kim McDonald, two year. Do any have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion on this agenda item? And if not, can we call the roll?
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Glenda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Motion carried. Curriculum programming?
Motion to approve items listed on curriculum programming consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, A through C.
Second?
Thank you.
Two questions? Just on the Riverside, the band's trip to Toronto, is that, the dates on that, I know we've approved it earlier, there's a change on this. I don't know what the change was specifically, but is that during senior project week?
I don't know, I didn't work with the dates, I don't.
It's the May fourteenth, fifteenth and sixteenth.
I would say.
That's probably early.
That's probably the last year of senior projects. And I think they had a change senior visit day because of it, because of the intro.
The agenda from last month actually said two thousand nineteen.
Right.
So that's, it was supposed to be two thousand twenty.
I don't know what the change was, but I was just, I was just wondering if that was senior project week. So at some point, if we can have an update on that.
What, this last two weeks were pushing back?
Well, I know, I just don't want, I just want to make sure they're not conflicting. That's a lot of seniors in the band, right, that would have to choose either senior project or the band trip. So I'm just curious. And then my second question was on the graduation. With, with seniors being done early, early, is there any reason why we don't push graduation earlier?
You mean forward?
Yeah, earlier, yeah.
Well, senior projects are just this week, so they're not, I mean, seniors are finishing this week.
Right, they may not physically be here, but they're still here.
They're still here?
They're still participating.
Is that like considered still here?
Yeah, because they have to finish that senior project, that's part of their pre- or graduation.
Okay, I'm just curious, right?
For not going to classes this last two weeks, they have to complete that, yeah.
And those who didn't, they're done. I was just curious. And the second question I had on graduation was the venue. Like, have we ever considered switching venues for graduation, seeing as how?
There's always been talk about having it outside, but no one in their right mind wants to gamble that with.
Outdoors?
Uncomfortable.
Well, not necessarily outside, I'm just saying, people are always scrambling for tickets.
Not any other, other place. I mean, and I know this year we're kind of challenged a little bit with the capacity.
Because it's a large class, it's graduates.
It is, and I think sophomore class is even larger.
Yeah, we have to, yeah, we have, I think, all the way through, I think the freshman class right now is our last. They're not as big, I think, yeah, our sophomore is the biggest class that we have left right now.
Right now, I talked to Jamie McIntyre about that, that's our concern, our next couple of classes. But after that, you know, according to what we have coming up, we should be okay at another primary center.
And I believe Pete and Dave worked together on that schedule, not me, I'm thinking about it as far as when that trip could go. So I'll verify.
I'm just curious.
But I don't believe it's going to interfere with the staff testing as well.
Okay, that's all I need.
Any other questions, Steve?
You good?
No. For a week, Jack Miley?
Aye.
Glenda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Motion carried. Building the grounds?
Motion to approve the items listed on the billions and grounds consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A through H. Can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Jeffries, any discussion? All right, can you call the roll, please?
Glenda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Motion carried. Takes us to the Board of Education update. If anyone's got anything?
I just want to pre-congratulate all the graduates from Riverside and look forward to seeing them on Sunday. Sunday, Sunday.
Program starts at two, we'd like everyone to get there about an hour for the primary center. And what was interesting is the student who became an Eagle Scout was working with Sub-Zero Mission. Our speaker is the founder of that program now. We had a few, I believe it was a nineteen eighty-nine grad of Riverside with you.
Yes, yeah, as for maybe other people in the room that were nineteen eighty-nine graduates. Yes.
Awesome.
He's also a scholar and he goes by the nickname Sard.
I can't wait for graduation. Anybody else? All right, I'm going to make a motion at eight fifty-six P M. to adjourn to executive session to discuss personnel matters of appointment and or employment, as well as compensation and purchase or sale of property, if I can have a second, please.
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Grassi, can you call the roll, please?
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Glenda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you all for coming.